This is a special meeting, and I'm getting with the county committee. And you're supposed to be doing the city's mic and public voting.
Collier Wise?
Here.
Helwig?
Here.
Holland?
Here.
Humphrey?
Here.
Price?
Here.
Sorenson?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Powell?
Here. Are there any visitors in the audience that wish to be heard on the topic of this? Oh, I didn't know there was a question. Is that okay? I didn't know he was back there. You guys are on TV. Okay, I think what I'll do is have you...
Adopt the agenda.
Okay. We could use a vote to adopt a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to adopt the agenda as printed. We don't... Any questions on that? Okay, so that passes. And then should we have the county do their roll call? Okay.
Monther?
Here.
Packard, Powell, Manning?
Here.
Hammond?
Here. Adoption of agenda?
Well moved.
Second.
A motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion passes.
Okay, then we'll turn to the public hearings. It's a second reading of ordinance 1401, amending Appendix A, 2012 Joint Zoning Regulations for Clay County. And James, will you head it up?
Yes. In 2012, the city adopted an ordinance with the county for the joint jurisdictional zoning area, which allows the city to have a say in existing and proposed land uses in an area that would directly impact the city. Prior to the adoption of the joint jurisdictional zoning area, also known as the JJZA, the city had approved several subdivisions outside of city limits: rolling hills, lowlands, silos, hillside acres, ranch estates, and the Chelsea subdivision. The existing code allows for single-family dwellings to be constructed within the A-1 agricultural district as a conditional use. The only stipulation is that there can be no more than three building eligibilities within the quarter-quarter section in order to be considered. However, a new replacement of any dwellings with another dwelling is allowed, and construction of a new dwelling within a lot of record is also allowed. But these two exceptions still require a conditional use permit. Therefore, during recent years, the city and the county and the JJZA has received several requests to construct single-family housings in this area. The majority of those were allowed to continue and apply for conditional use permits since they met the code requirements. However, there have been a few that have been denied by staff due to the fact that they were not in a lot of record or that they would have exceeded the density limitations. Those that were allowed to apply for a conditional use permit still have to go through a lengthy process that takes around one month or so to resolve. By rezoning these areas from A-1 agriculture to our rural residential, new single-family dwellings would be considered an allowable use and would no longer need to go through the complete conditional use process, and there would be no density limitations as well. So therefore, the city and county planning commissions held a joint meeting on April 18th, 2019, in which affected property owners were invited to attend. Most of the questions at the meeting from property owners were regarding how this would affect their taxes, their allowable use for the land, and some of those comments that were received have been included in your packet. Both of the commissions voted unanimously to amend their governing bodies to approve the rezon. The first reading of this ordinance, 1401, was in front of the council at the May 20th meeting, in which it was approved. So all that being said, the city council is asked to consider approving the second reading of the ordinance, which is what we're here for tonight, and administration at this point recommends approving the second reading, and a roll call vote is required on your behalf.
Okay. Want to add anything?
Just a couple of things I'm going to add, just that over the time we've done this, we've fielded a bunch of questions, most of them having to do with whether or not this change would make the property's taxes change. And I think we've addressed that concern. Zoning, rezoning in itself doesn't affect the taxation of a property. People also worried about becoming annexed into the city of Vermillion, and again, we talked about that, and I think we've answered that question too, that that is not the intent of this, and that in fact, it's not going to be contiguous to the city of Vermillion, that we wouldn't have any kind of annexation effort. Those were the two, I think, major concerns. There were a few other concerns, but all in all, this, I think, is a favorable change for those properties, and that we also recommend approval from the county side.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none. Do you folks want to have anything further to say? Okay, well then, we need a motion, Tom.
I have a question, if you don't mind, before we make a motion, even though we could discuss it then, but this is... Mr. Purdy, this is something I meant to ask at first reading. Is the phrase... This allows for some light development. Is the phrase "light development" defined in any way, or how do we know where the line is on between light, medium?
So, yeah, I mean, that harkens back to the density requirements of the rural residential district and the JJZA, which I believe the minimum lot size is in acre.
Is one acre. And then there's also a list of allowable uses in the zoning regulations. So the light development is going to be residential in nature, like you would allow things like an accessory structure, or there's a couple of other things that are allowed that are more rural in nature. I think a small greenhouse is one of them, you know, that sort of thing. So all of those uses are covered in the zoning regulation.
Thank you. Further discussion? I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve, and this calls for a roll call vote, and so, Don, if you'll set up the machinery for us.
I think we have to do it by, because we're not in the right seats. We have to do it by voice.
Oh, okay.
Collier Wise?
Aye.
Helwig?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Humphrey?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Sorenson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Powell?
Aye. It's a...
I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Monther?
Here. Or aye?
Powell, Manning?
Aye.
Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I think that's three of us to speak.
Second.
Let's call our meeting to order, and Mike, would you call the roll, please?
Collier Wise?
Here.
Helwig?
Here.
Holland?
Here.
Humphrey?
Here.
Price?
Here.
Sorenson?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Powell?
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have minutes for June 3rd special meeting and June 3rd regular meeting. Could use a motion to approve.
Will move.
Motion to second to approve both sets of minutes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Adoption of the agenda, John, Mike, any additions, corrections to the agenda? Motion to second to approve the agenda as printed, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Under visitors to be heard, addressing the council, persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized, go to the podium and state your name and address. For items that are not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes, and no decision will be made at this time. For regular agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed, and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless the council member moves to allow another person to speak, and there is unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through their presiding officer at any time. At this point, we have a proclamation, LGBTQ Pride Week proclamation, and Tom, if you'd read that, please.
Whereas the month of June... I'll back off a little. Whereas the month of June is designated as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTQ Pride Month nationwide, and is celebrated by cities around the globe, and whereas Vermillion has a diverse LGBTQ community that includes people, people of all ethnicities, religions, and professions, and whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gender, identity, or sexual orientation, and whereas the city of Vermillion will celebrate its first Pride Week and make it an annual event this year, June 17th through the 23rd, with numerous activities for the whole community in which to participate and enjoy. Now, therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim June 17th through 23, 2019, as LGBTQ Pride Week in the city of Vermillion, and we encourage the citizens of our community to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of all citizens and visitors dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, the 17th day of June 2019.
Thank you, Tom. Travis, if you would, please.
Hi, my name is Travis Lettler, I live at 313 Prentice. I just wanted to say thank you for this proclamation. I serve not only on Vermillion's Human Relations Commission, but I'm also the Chair of Equality South Dakota, which is South Dakota's only statewide LGBTQ advocacy organization. I think for a long time, we've always known that Vermillion was a welcoming and inviting community, but I really do want to thank the city council for their work over the last couple of years in making a lot of positive changes, a lot of positive moves forward that has really proved that Vermillion is one of the most welcoming cities in the entire state, so thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Travis. Are there any in the audience that wish to speak on any topic that's not on the agenda? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, turn to the council. Is there anyone in the council that has something not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. Item A, a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Vermillion Area Chamber of Commerce and Development Company on or about July 11, 18, 25, August 1, 8, 15, and 29, for Thursdays on the plots, events on Rottigan Plots, and adjoining portions of Main and Market Streets. And Mike, please.
The Vermillion Chamber and Development Company has submitted their application for the special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Thursdays on the plots events on the date stated. The event will be held on the Rottigan Plots at the corner of Market Street and Main Street, half-block of Market Street, south of Main Street and Main Street as it abuts the plots. The street closing for that is later on the agenda. The police chief's report and notice of public hearing are attached. The police chief's report has no incidents with the event in the last few years. As the event will be held on city streets and city property, the ordinance allows the city to include such conditions and restrictions as the governing body may deem appropriate. The VCDC has provided a release and indemnification, releasing the city from liability for the event. The certificate of insurance naming the city as additional insured has not been received, but the VCDC said their insurance agent would be getting that supplied to the city. The fee has been paid. Administration recommend approval of the special daily malt beverage and wine license for the VCDC for the Thursdays on the plots on the date stated, contingent upon receipt of the certificate of insurance naming the city as additional insured for the event and any other conditions that the city council may want to include on that. The motion should also address the request to use the Rottigan Plots for these events.
The paper discusses that the individual selling beer and wine may or may not be VCD staff. Do we know, like, if they have to be TAM trained or anything like that?
I guess I would look to the chamber, but I don't know if... Who they're going to have, if they have been TAM certified to do that.
Nate, would you care to address that?
Absolutely. Good evening. Nate Welch with the VCDC. We have volunteers that usually serve on the Up Next Thursday on the Plots Committee that do serve that. Right now, we have not in the past, and we don't plan on going through that TAM certification unless we are asked specifically to do so.
John, do you know, have we ever required that of organizations?
I don't believe we have with any of our volunteer organizations, be it the Arts Council of VCDC, Brez, Rats, and Rock and Roll. I don't think we've required volunteers to be TAM certified.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to talk or speak on this topic? Okay, turn it to the council.
Move approval upon the C W G. Second.
Motion to second to approve the request contingent on receiving the insurance information. Any further discussion?
Should also mention approval in the class.
That would be included in my motion.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries, thank you. Item B, special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Clay County Agricultural Fair Association on or about August 8 to 10, 2019, on the fairgrounds and a portion of High Street. Again, Mike, please.
The Clay County Agricultural Fair Association has submitted their application for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for August 8, 9, and 10, for a beer garden area and for the West Arena for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night's events, and on Saturday night for a fenced area and a portion of a high street where they have a band and a dance. Diagrams included in the packet with the areas that alcoholic beverage will be allowed. The street closing is later on the agenda. The notice of hearing is attached. As this event will include a band and dance on city street, the ordinance allows the city council to include such conditions as restrictions as the governing body may deem appropriate and consistent with state law. We have received the release and indemnification released in the city for liability for the event, and we've received a certificate of insurance naming the city as additional insured, including liquor liability. The police chief's memo indicates that records checks for all parties involved, the special daily license had no alcohol-related violations or felony convictions. The police chief recommends the following parameters be established for the event. Four to six adult volunteers will supervise the event's distribution and consumption of alcohol. The number will be determined by the amount and turnout for the dance. Signage will be posted at the entry gates to the controlled areas and alcoholic dispensing point stating that all alcohol consumed is only... Alcohol consumption is only allowed inside the fenced area. No one under 21 will be served or allowed to consume alcohol. No intoxicated person will be served. No alcohol can leave the fenced area. No outside alcohol is allowed inside the fenced spectator area. Staff will check all persons wishing to purchase and provide a wristband once their age has been verified. Persons who do not have a wristband, who appear to be under 21, will not be allowed to purchase alcohol. The special daily license fee has been paid. Administration recommend approval of the special daily license contingent upon complying with the police chief's recommendations and any other conditions the city council would want to include on the license.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing none, turn it to council, Tom.
I move approval of the special daily malt beverage and wine license contingent upon complying with the chief of police recommendations and understanding as stated in our information from the chief of police and the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. We have no old business, so we'll move to new business. Item A, a first reading of ordinance 1402, amending Title 15 Land Usages to add Chapter 157 Small Cell Facility Regulations, providing provisions for small cell wireless communication facilities. And John, please.
Thank you. I feel like this has been a long time, well, it has been a long time coming. The council initially started this discussion back in 2017 when some of the... There's some interest expressed with small cell development in the area, and particularly in our community. During 2018, the South Dakota Municipal League worked on a model ordinance that would be provided to the cities as a starting point. They worked with industry over the course of 2018, and then it was, I think, New Year's Eve Day when we actually got a draft of that to begin our discussion to formulate the ordinance from there. We've also worked with industry, Jeff Armour, with Verizon's office out of Omaha is here, and he participated in a couple of conference calls with us and met with the city council at one of your noon meetings. I think you've had at least four noon meetings that I could find where we've talked about this, offered background and education on it, and then we've backed... First part of May, you received a draft of the ordinance, not numbered, but the sections were on there. The Utilities Committee did review this, and they made a recommendation from there to move forward with the formatting part of it. It's a big ordinance, there's about 15 pages to it, and I guess maybe I'll try to break it down into a couple snippets, if you will. It does cover the deployment of small cell applications on either utility poles, buildings, signage, or parking lot lights, and Jeff may have some examples of those he's going to show you. Even though it is permitted in the ordinance, it still requires a permit, so a respective company that does want to provide this service in our community would need to come to the city to receive a permit. Those permits, for the most part, would be issued administratively. There would be an opportunity, if it was denied, that it could be appealed to the planning commission and/or city council with respect to issuing that. I guess the other player that I failed to mention in this is the FCC. During the course of 2018, they were very active and busy in terms of offering input, regulations, and guidance with regard to how this process would take place, and so a lot of this language has been driven by findings of the FCC. I would note that it's a... The application does include a lot of different things. We would see in that application is yet to be developed until at least we get to your first reading. There'd be photo simulations, there'd be radio frequency emissions compliance, demonstration that the pole or the support structure can hold this equipment, a site plan, there's aesthetics that you talked about earlier this year, a lot of different things that would come into play with this. So that in a snippet is what those 15 pages are kind of talking about there. There would be a process, as we usually do with an ordinance where there's a fee, and the FCC has provided guidance with regard to what those fees largely would be. That would be proposed with the second reading of an ordinance should it reach that point in time. So at this point in time, we can talk a lot more about it, but I know the council's had a couple of different presentations on it, and we also have an industry individual here that might offer some comments, or I believe wants to offer comments, so I'll just pause for now and be available for questions. We do recommend approval of the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, then Jeff?
Jeff.
Jeff, would you care to give us the... Your vote?
Good evening, council. I think I have the right position there, and we can go through the pictures in a minute. I'm Jeff Armour, out of the Omaha office for Verizon, and specifically managing the small cell deployments and infrastructure outreach with cities and other municipality entities for Nebraska, Iowa, and South Dakota. So we definitely get in your neck of the woods quite a bit, and we've met with, I think, John and Jim two or three times in person, and definitely more than that by phone, as well as meeting several of you at the work session a month or so ago. And we've definitely enjoyed our process of working with John and Jim through the model ordinance that the league has put out. That was a discussion with the league that did take several months with industry. As with anything, there's still several areas that we would like to see improved and that we worked with John and Jim to work into the draft, and not all of them made it, and some of those issues will have to be worked out if they do become issues in the permitting process, and some of them have already been addressed most recently. So I do have some photos here, but we think that the ordinance is a good step forward for Vermillion for the infrastructure build-out and technology advancement for the community, and a lot of us don't even know all the benefits that it can bring to a community, especially where you have the college town and all the attributes that go along with that. So Verizon looks forward to working with the city for that deployment of that infrastructure and the small cell permitting. Like John said, it goes through a permit process, and I think you'd be pretty impressed with the amount of detail that we go to to use... To submit to the city, and in fact, our own construction people are able to use that detail when they build the site. So we tend to provide more detail than is even required, but just a few points that we may need to deal with in the permit process, so the council's aware, just the special review, we want to make sure that that process happens within the allotted time period that the FCC provides. Your ordinance calls for a noise study that was discussed at the league level. Your ordinance calls for a noise study that was discussed at the, the league level, and there is no noise that is emitted from these from an audible level. Requires propagation maps. Generally, industry will not provide those because there's trade secrets. And there's some limitations on height of antennas, which we'll see in a minute, may limit the design that the city may want, but that's something that we can work out in that permitting process, and I'm confident that we'll be able to do that. As far as the rates and fees, that will be set, of course, by a rate and fee resolution that you guys will look at maybe at the next meeting. It has to be a cost neutral, revenue neutral fee, and based on what the city's actual costs are for maintaining that small cell unit from year to year. Typically, what we've seen in similarly situated cities in South Dakota, anywhere from $100 per pole per year to 150. The FCC provides that it could be up to 270. That's at a national level, it actually comes out of Texas. And that applies as a cap, but it still has to be a cost base. And when we originally came several months ago to try and work with the city on this issue, we had proposed the 125 for the city, based on the area and the other cities, what they're, what they're doing, and what are actual costs that we foresee the city undertaking from year to year. So we would propose somewhere in the range of the 125 to 150. When you start to get towards the 270, that's when industry and Verizon in particular starts to look at where do we allocate resources. So something to think about, we can have a further conversation about that in between first and second reading, and even at the next meeting. So if we want to look at, I know you guys saw some of these pictures before, and I know you want to, everybody wants to know, what do they look like? What's on the pole? What are small cells? Well, these are real life small cells, and you've heard a lot probably about 5G. These are also 4G, and these we'll see tonight are 4G. And it's not necessarily about the technology, it's about the infrastructure buildout. So we have to have the infrastructure buildout. Once we get the fiber, once we get the power, or tap into the power on the pole through those agreements, then we can swap out whatever equipment is coming of the next generation. So the infrastructure's there. So there's no guarantee of any direct timeline for that next technology. But definitely, we would be looking at initially serving the coverage area and the capacity needs for a 4G system for Vermillion. And then you would have the technology infrastructure to build out from there. And as you know, there are several different areas of town that need some coverage area, some service capacity needs. That's where these are a nice non-avasive solution to do that compared to the larger tower. However, we still use the larger towers to provide that blanket coverage. And then with these, we can stick where needed for those hotspots. So this one is in Omaha, this is a panel design where we have the two antennas there, and then the radio there. We do color matching to a metal pole. With a wood pole, we try and blend it with a similar white color, so it blends in with the sky. And I did have some wood pole pictures, but we're on paper tonight, so these are the ones I had on paper. But this is a similar one. These are redesigned to match the city poles in Omaha. And we would do a similar situation here, working with the city, where we actually, if needed, would either come in and swap and drop the pole, where we take, if it's not structurally of capacity, we would replace the pole at our cost, give it back to the city, and then pay you rent. So it's a boost of, of pole infrastructure as well. These are more panel designs of a 4G nature. The 5G would actually be a little smaller. And it all depends, like here we have one antenna, and that is all that is needed for that area. Here we have two. Sometimes they could have three, but that is one node. And if we get to the back ones, here's an example in the Fair Acres neighborhood, which is a multimillion dollar neighborhood in, in Omaha. And they have these large houses, but they didn't have very good cell service. It's very hilly, but they didn't want a big tower. So the easiest way to provide value to expensive homes, and even in less affluent neighborhoods, small cells are a good solution for that as well. Because we can put these on street corners, and you have some of the cutting edge technology right down the street. Typically, though, we're looking at those high density areas where people congregate, whether it be a football game, or a community event, or Dakota Days, that kind of thing. So here's one in Lincoln where we have more of a cantana, they call it. It's a lollipop design where the antenna sits on top. These are completely redesigned poles to match the city infrastructure, to provide for that top antenna. And that's the one where the ordinance may limit some of this with how much we can extend on top. But those are some options that we work with the city on to determine a preference. Some cities like where this antenna sticks out like an arm off the top, that's called an armed cantana. But we would definitely try and meet the needs of the city while we also need to cover the area with the whole purpose of the small cell with cell service. So that was a lot of talking for me. If you have any questions, fire away.
You've read the proposed ordinance and stated some exceptions to it?
There are, there are exceptions that would help boost the ordinance, but they're not, I, I still think we can work with the city going forward through that process. So there's nothing that would stop council consideration tonight.
With the displacement of these, how, how close do they have to be?
Well, it really depends on what, what area we're trying to address. If it's a capacity need where the big tower's getting overloaded, or we're trying to build out more of a blanket coverage. So typically, they would go anywhere from 300 to 1,000 feet. They could extend a little farther. It depends on what watt of radio we can use, how much power we can use for that area, and if it's hilly, or if we have trees, or buildings. It's a little bit more of a finicky of a signal than, say, a big tower.
Would that be usable for G5 or 5G?
These-
Or would that be, have to be redone?
All we would have to do would be to swap out the radio and the antenna. And they tend to, technology gets smaller and smaller, and our capabilities to reduce the size on the pole get smaller. And that's happened dramatically in the last several years. But if, all the require, all the requirements are needed for small cells are power and fiber. So we need fiber connectivity. And then, once we have that, we can swap out the equipment as needed to upgrade to the 5G. But we, we wouldn't be looking at, or have any guaranteed plans for that right now. Right now, we're talking about building out that infrastructure. We couldn't speak to the future as far as what we can promise for Vermillion. But what I can say is, once you have this technology and the infrastructure buildout for the 4G, it's an equipment swap out.
Thank you. Rich?
You stated earlier about the height restrictions. Ours currently, if I remember, it is 50, and then higher if you need special approval. Would you come up against the 50-foot limit often?
It really just depends on the pole, and the neighboring poles, and what the city was looking at at that area, or what the equipment needs were in that area. What I was talking to was, on page eight, there's a restriction about top mounted poles. And that's where we would just be aware of, of wanting to allow for the different technology that the city may want to blend with the infrastructure.
So basically, you're saying if it's a 20-foot pole, you might have to ask to have another 30-foot on top of it, or something?
Oh, no. No, no, no.
No.
Not, not the way you phrase it. The only concern we would have about raising a pole is if we need to put a, a typical situation would be where we need to put an antenna on top of the pole, like this, because the city preferred a cantana, or that was the technical needs of the area, to get a more radius signal off the top. That's where we would have to add to the pole height. Another situation might be where we need to fit equipment on the pole, and it's a little too short, we would work with the city to extend the pole.
If I read it correctly, I think we say 10 feet, and if you want more, you need approval. And would 10 feet cover it?
I can't speak to every situation.
We're flat, pretty much flat here, so I can't see it having to go over hills and so forth.
But a lot of it depends on the radio frequency that another, other guys smarter than me figure out as far as what the needs are for that propagation. And then we would go to the city and say, we need to work on top of your pole, or replace the pole with a little higher pole. And that's where we would work with the city on those restrictions. My whole point of bringing it up is, the FCC order and ordinances, one of the main purposes of that, or those, is for certainty. The city wants to know, how do we protect our right of ways? How does this whole thing work? What is this whole thing? And then the carriers want to know the process for deploying, because these are not cheap pieces of equipment. So if we're going to design for a city, or we're going to design for a build plan to deploy, we have to do that 12 to 24 months in advance. So the FCC came out and said, there has to be some type of certainty for carriers to make that investment. And that's all we're asking for, is that certainty, so we know if we allocate those assets, the city is on board with that.
Have you looked, or have the engineers mentioned anything about the quantity? Are you talking more than 50 poles in the city?
Well, nobody has a crystal ball, because we don't-
You can't ballpark it? You, you, it's not, it's not 100, I assume? This is a fairly small city, so I'd be surprised if you got 50.
Initially, we would probably, and you can't hold me to it, but-
Right.
Initially, for a city this size, typically, we would look at an initial deployment of five or six.
Right.
And we would hit those high capacity needs, those high capacity areas where our system on our big towers are being overloaded. And these are easy solutions to work with the city on, to provide that.
Thank you.
And what you're getting at is more of a densification to where you see in larger cities where they have an urban area, and say, you know, a downtown business district, or downtown retail district. That's where you might see more than what we're talking about tonight for Vermillion.
Other comments or questions?
I'll wait till after she's done.
Okay, Julie.
One concern about the pole top, though, should be-
Turn her mic on.
I think the point about the, the pole top antennas, the canisters, should be addressed, because right at the bottom there, let's see, it's item E1D on page eight. It says, exceptions may be permitted whenever the city and applicant mutually agree on acceptable alternative designs.
Right. And we worked with John and Jim for that language. I just wanted to point it out, I don't want to dwell on it. But anytime we add that discretion, or the city adds that discretion, it erodes some of the certainty that the whole ordinance is made to create and that you are made to legislate to staff. So granting that discretion kind of breaks it down a little bit, but we're confident we can work with staff through that. So it's not, it, it's not a deal breaker for our deployment necessarily, but we may come to the city and say, hey, we want to work with you on this design.
Okay, one more question, if I may. You had mentioned the noise study, which is on there, and then the revenue, which we'll talk about later. But you mentioned maps item, but I wasn't able to locate what your concern was.
Oh, the ordinance, and it's typical of sometimes larger towers, calls for carrier providing propagation maps. And what that means is, how far will this one pole cover?
Sure.
And truly, that's competitive in nature and trade secret oriented, especially when we get to small cells where we're building out such an intricate network, that carriers, I think you'll have a hard time getting those maps from carriers.
Okay, and where do, do you know where in the ordinance that was discussed that that was required?
Oh, sure.
As part of the permit process?
That was page seven. And again, that's something we'd be more than willing to work through with staff. But if staff reads that literally, we may have an impasse with, not necessarily even Verizon, but another carrier not wanting to divulge trade secrets in a permit, because that's a public record. It's different than if we signed a nondisclosure agreement with the city and we showed you our map. Because it's that public record, we would have concern about that.
And if, I don't know if this would be allowable, but if we agreed to have administration review this map under executive session or something like that?
I would defer to Jim, but I would think if, since it's proprietary and confidential information, and it'd be part of a lease to a business, you could probably review that in executive session if we came to that, would that be?
I mean, I would really go back to what's the purpose of it. I think the league wanted it in here in relation to macro towers, big towers, that, okay, if you're going to put a, a tower here, or in this case, a pole here with a node, we want you to justify and show us that it's going to do some good.
I think the purpose of it, though, is that people want to know where all of these are going to be located. I think the concern is like, what if there are so many, and we, you know?
Well, they tell you where they're going to be located.
An aesthetic concern, and so knowing how many there are going to be would, such a map would tell us that extent.
Sure.
But I would be okay with being, that being in an executive session as opposed to a public record.
And the public record will definitely tell you where they're at, we have to. So you'll know where every single one is at, and you can put them on a map if you want. The propagation map, that in particular, shows how far the coverage goes.
Go ahead, Steve.
If I could follow up on that. So that's proprietary technology that you all may be able to expand your reach further or shorter than other companies. And that's what you don't want to share with other folks, is that right?
It's a network buildout that provides for trade secrets as far as how, how we're using our, our network and how we're building our network to meet the needs of customers.
Okay. So what's, what do we see as the public good in knowing that information?
I would assume that they're going to put poles where they need for the coverage. Whether we, why would, why do we need to know that? I mean, that's the whole purpose in putting them in, is to get coverage.
I, from a staff standpoint, I don't know that we have the ability to judge. They can give us the map that shows that they have really wide ranging, or really small, but we don't have a, whatever type of engineer, no offense, Jose, on staff that could, to tell, know whether they're making it up or not. I mean, I, at the end of the day, I think the council's question is, what does it look like? Where are they at? That sort of thing is perhaps, I would suggest, more important than whether it covers half a block, a block, or six blocks. And Jim, would you?
Well, as has been stated, the equipment is not cheap equipment. And so I think you can rest assured that a provider is not going to put in more than is necessary in the, in the interests of saving cost. And that's why the fees have been a concern and been addressed tonight. So probably, the map issue is really a non-issue.
Okay, so we could, we could, if we wanted to amend this to strike that entire paragraph, or just that number three?
The number three.
The number three under I. Okay.
And really, I'll boil down our concerns to two things. And one is the council and the staff, the city, working with us to deploy a design that works, and is technically feasible, and also reasonable aesthetics for the city. And then number two, it's always about money on the back end of what are the rates and fees going to be. So really, those are the two main issues that we tend to see hurt deployment in a city.
Are you okay with sub-paragraph two of I, of section I there?
What page are you on?
On the bottom of page seven.
Seven.
Are you talking about, about the propagation maps, or?
Yeah, so a clear and written statement of purpose, which will minimally include a description of the technical objective to be achieved, which seems fine, and then to, a, to scale map that identifies proposed site location and targeted service area, which also seems fine to me, but... And then we're thinking about striking the third, which is the full colors signal propagation maps.
Yeah, and really, the, the third one was our concern.
Okay.
And really, the second clause of, of this, of number, of double I, number two, where it says, and the targeted service area to be benefi, benefited by the proposed project.
That's pretty innocuous, right?
It's innocuous, it just depends on how staff reads it, and, you know, we're going to work with staff on that. It's kind of like Jim said, these things cost a lot of money per pole, and we're not going to invest something that's not going to give us a biggest bang for the buck as far as coverage.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Richard.
Let's see. First of all, that entire statement, I don't think, I'm a retired electrical engineer of space, and I wouldn't understand the map you gave them to me. And I don't know what percentage coverage you want. And I can understand it being proprietary. Anyway, it wouldn't be kept secret.
Sure.
So, but just to state a general locational poles, in my mind, would be just fine. It would cover everything that people want to know. The rest of the questions I have about this don't really retain, pertain to you, but to us in writing. There's things that, as I talked earlier, basically, this is written apparently for a lawyer to read and learn to understand. And I'd like to take out some of the terms that you can't find in the dictionary and replace them with something that's meaningful to the general public in that respect. And then a couple of other things are just clarifications. The reason I'm saying this is that what we may vote on, which I hope we do today, may change a little bit in the second reading, and be primarily just clarification. Wouldn't really change the.
I think it's key, as Jim has mentioned to us before, if they're not substantive changes, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Very good.
If you don't change the subs. If you don't change the ordinance substantively between first and second reading, then you can proceed to second reading. If you change it substantively, then you got to do a first reading all over.
Right. And I don't propose that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Are we ready to have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw the mic on. To, to avoid the second, to, starting over again, if there were substantive changes, if, if they were not, should we do some sort of amendment to what we have in front of us right now before we do first reading? Amend this proposal? I guess that might be a question for council.
Well, I think on, what John discussed in this version of this ordinance prior to meeting here, and on page seven, on, yeah, design justification, in the third line, I think, period, you can put out to city rendering additional compliance with this such section. I think that dynamic is being omitted as it is explained with the language that is handled with the city. Maybe we do the same through H. The last few words rendering additional compliance with this such section should say unnecessary, but you just put a period after C. I think that would issue. But what you mean, then, we've already discussed I, I think we're going to put again, even a small I, a small double I, a little period again, proposed project, and yet, a small three. Then on page 12. There, there was a provision, even the last sentence, this is a point that is not limited to mobile media, sure. We had the, kind of starting with Verizon, because it was going to be, you know, mobile media portioning of these, small cell facility that was super close to the.
Which section is that, Jim?
On page 12, if.
I've been trying to get Jeff to come to the mode and lead him right away. It won't work.
I know cities need all the help they can get, but we don't, there's not much grass to grow that high.
So page 12, like.
The last sentence?
Yes.
Okay.
And then on the appeal process, I think, what you. Just to make it absolutely clear, we should add at the end of the last sentence, upon expiration of section 157.05B, review period, period.
Could you read that again, please?
Upon expiration of. Section 157.05B, parentheses, capital B, parentheses.
Capital what? Capital B?
Yes.
And Jim, if I may, is that what you're talking about, applying the shot clock?
That's the last word.
That's a period.
For those 60, 90 days? So essentially, the appeal process would fall within that 60 to nine, or 90 day shot clock period. Is that how I understand it? Right.
We have the appeal to the planning commission, and then we have another appeal to the city council. We got to all get, we got to get all of it done within those times, or we are considered to not have complied with the shot clock. And that causes other things to come into play then.
Yeah. Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you, Jim.
While we're on the point of nitpicky, on page three, on our definitions, with the wireless infrastructure provider and the wireless services provider, it says a person. Shouldn't that be a person or an entity? Because we would go into agreement with a company and not necessarily a single person?
Person is also.
Person is also defined earlier, and it means an individual, corporation, limited liability company, partnership, association, trust, or other entity or organization, including the city.
Okay. I see that. Thank you.
Page two. Thank you, Julie. Anything else, counsel?
I move approval with the chairman's just discussed.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for coming up clarifying for us. All right. We also then go to item B, a request to close Market Street with West Main Street to the south end of Rattigan Plots, as well as West Main Street from the west line of the West Main and Prospect Streets intersection, west through west side of Rattigan Plots from four to eight P.M. on the dates of July 11, 1825, August 1, 815, and 22, and August 29, for Thursdays on the Plots hosted by Vermillion Area Chamber and Development Company. And there he is, Jolly.
It's great to be here. All right. So the VCDC has requested that the closure of Main Street from the west line of the intersection with Prospect West to the west edge of Rattigan Plats and Market Street from Main Street, south through the south end of Rattigan Plats for Thursday on the Plats, for July 11th, July 18th, July 25th, August 1st, August 8th, August 15th, August 22nd, and August 29th, from 4 P.M. to 8 P.M. on the dates mentioned. So the VCDC will discuss with businesses individually to let them know about the event. And as noted by the street closure request, all cleanup will be handled by VCDC staff and Thursday on the Plats members. Thursday on the Plats is a fantastic community event that consists of now eight downtown concerts that are free to the public. And this event features bounce houses, drinks, foods, and gives our local businesses a chance to interact with other community members. This event is part of the Young Professionals Network, Vermillion Next, and is a great way for them to give back to the community. No financial considerations will, is needed as VCDC staff and Plats committee staff will handle the event and cleanup. And expect, expected attendees for Thursday on the Plats will range from 250 to 300 people. So for that, we recommend that the city council approve the street closing for the aforementioned section of Maiden and Market Street for July 11th, July 18th, July 25th, August 1st, August 8th, August 15th, August 22nd, and August 29th. So.
Thank you, Jolly. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this? Counsel? Motion to second to approve the listed request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Item C, a request to close High Street from bike path to Vermillion Public Transit, approximately 600 block of High Street, from Thursday, July 8th, 2019, at 7:00 A.M. to Sunday, July 11, August 11th. Did I say July? Both, it's August 8th and then August 11th, 2019, at 10:00 A.M. for the Clay County Fair. Again, Jolly.
All right. So the Clay County Fair Board has come with this request that a portion of High Street from Cherry Street, which is the bike path that runs adjacent to Cherry Street, to the Vermillion Public Transit driveway, which is on the south end of the fairgrounds for the Clay County Fair. Closing the street enhances the safety of fairgoers and provides additional space to utilize for events. The date of the Clay County Fair Board, which was mentioned earlier, is Thursday, August 8th, starting at 7:00 A.M. and ends on Sunday, August 11th, at 10:00 A.M. So as noted by the request, the driveway for the Vermillion Public Transit will remain open to ensure that individuals that need access to it are not impeded by the street closure request. Post-event cleanup will be led by fair staff Sunday morning following the fair, and High Street will open as soon as it is cleaned up and safe to open. So expected attendees of the fair is estimated to be about 4,000 people. And this event is one of many that the Clay County Fair Board have presented as, to increase visitor spending for the community by promoting Vermillion and Clay County as a destination for popular events. And again, no financial consideration is necessary as on-duty fair staff will be assisting with the event. And we recommend that the city council approve the street closure of the aforementioned section of High Street from the bike path that runs adjacent to Cherry Street on August 8th, from 7:00 A.M. to Sunday, August 11th, at 10:00 A.M.
Thank you. Mike, is that typical? You're done by 10:00 on Sunday?
The last few years, they've been done by that time with the major cleanup and the stuff's been checked out. They've still got some building cleanup to do, but the street is usually open then for people to pass through.
I just want to make sure they had enough time.
Yep.
Counsel? I move approval. A motion to approve the request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Item D, a request from Fegan Construction on behalf of the South Dakota Sigma Chapter to occupy the right of way along portions of Adams Street and Madison Street for construction purposes. And S.A., please.
Thank you. As you mentioned, Fegan Construction of Sioux Falls on behalf of the S.A.E. Chapter House, located at Madison and Adams, is requesting to remove some parking temporarily during the construction of the new S.A.E. house at that corner. The request for the removal of the, temporary removal of the parking, which is to facilitate a truck movement during construction, Madison Street, Adams, Madison again, Prentice, north would be in that direction. This is existing house right now. They're going to be tearing that house down, and eventually will be the parking lot for the new house. The new house will be constructed in this area. And right now, they do have this area fenced off, and they have temporary parking for the, the students, I guess, that would be living in this facility during construction just north here during, in that volleyball court. But right now, they're actually asking for 75 feet of Madison or Adams here to be removed for parking, and the parking to be removed in this section of Madison here. Again, 75 feet, roughly speaking. The request from Fegan would be for the remainder of June and all of July of 2019. And again, we, this is something that typically could be addressed just by the city manager. But due to the, the sensitivity, I guess, with the neighbors, parking be removed and the length of the removal, we thought it would be prudent to actually bring it over to the council to, just in case there's a member of the public that would have any concerns, that, that point might be addressed. There's no financial consideration. With all that being said, administration recommends, recommends approving the removal of the temporary, parking temporarily in these two streets.
Thanks, Jose. Counsel?
Is this, could you tell, could you tell us where these trucks are coming in from farther away? Are they coming down Plum and over? Are they coming down Jefferson and over, and then down Prentice and then over? Where, where do they come from? For this tight corner?
They are actually going to be coming down Plum, and then getting to Madison, going east on Madison, making this loop on Madison, then going south on Adams, going east on Madison again, going south on Prentice. Once they get to Clark, then they would be going east on Clark all the way to either Jefferson or Norbeck. And then, actually, yeah, they could either go north. Eventually, they're going to be making it all the way to Alfred's Farm. How they get there, they can either use Cherry Street and Crawford, or they could go down on Anderson to Main and then go further east on Main Street. But, yeah.
Do we have a motion yet, Mike? Okay. Now, we have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Thanks, Jose.
Thanks.
Item E, an agreement with University of South Dakota to provide law enforcement powers to the university police department through the Vermillion Police Department. And John, please.
Thank you. As I think the council's aware, a university police department in our state needs to obtain their law enforcement authority from an agency that has jurisdiction in the community. So for U.S.D., Vermillion is obviously one of those opportunities. We have worked with U.S.D. since early 1990s to have an agreement which provides the police powers to university police department through our police department here in Vermillion. Our current agreement was set to expire in December of last year. We did enter into a six-month agreement to extend that agreement through June of this year. And we've had quite a bit of discussion, really a lot of the discussion focused on training, what training is required, who might be paying for that, who might be providing that training, things along that line. We did work out a new three-year agreement that is included in your packet. It does address a couple of different things. There would be $500 contribution to the city for officer training, particularly those larger events, like the active shooter, and some of the larger training opportunities that we provide, or in partnership provide with them. It does provide for some use of space. One of the challenges with our public safety building is it's not always in the best of condition in that basement down there. That's something certainly the courthouse committee's been looking at. And so they would provide some additional training space that we could utilize for the classroom piece of it that way. And then also, you know, it's great to have agreements, but if we don't address those and attend to those, we have these like their cable franchise or natural gas franchise. There'd be an annual review and sort of a presentation just to make sure that we're up to date and not letting something slip through or, or things are building up over time. So those are a couple of the changes. Otherwise, I would say is substantially similar to what was the last agreement. There were some things during the last agreement that had to do with insurance that were worked out prior to the extension that had to do with the state's insurance and, and what was required that way. That was ironed out probably in 20, late 2017, I believe it was. So that language for the first time is in the agreement versus what the understanding we had before. So it has been reviewed by both the city attorney and the USC's attorney, and we'd recommend approval of the agreement.
Thank you, John. Comments or questions from counsel? I would just thank you and the staff for the work you put into this over the years to come up with something that's workable for both the city and the university. It makes a lot of sense that we cooperate. Although I don't understand, chief, some of the words in there with, like, what's PPCT, use of force?
It's beating people up.
But I assume.
Physical control tactics.
Tom, did you have a?
Yeah. Thank you. I realize the city attorney and the police chief have reviewed this, and here's a proposal. But I'd like to know if you want to add anything tonight? Anything that we should be concerned with or? I was on the council back in the early 90s when we first discussed this, and it's, it's worked off and on. It's, it's generally been a good relationship. But are you satisfied with this? This proposal?
I guess the answer is yes. I mean, we've reached, it is, it is a compromise. And I guess like all good compromises, nobody walked away with everything they wanted. So it, it evolved over the scope of months. It actually started, we had a one-year agreement before this because we actually started talking about it in that year and moving forward. So it, it is a movement in the right direction, I believe.
Thank you, chief. Counsel?
Second?
Motion and a second to approve the agreement. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
We have no bid openings, so we'll turn to item 10. John, city managers report.
Thank you. Several items to go, just to mention here. Thank you. Several items to go, just to mention here. As we talked about at our last noon meeting on June 3rd, there's some interest in looking at home rules. So a home rule study committee is being formed. I'd ask that interested citizens, they would complete an expression of interest form and return it to the city manager's office by noon on July 12th. And then we'll make the appointment shortly after that date. Other, another opportunity for a committee, we are also putting together a complete count committee for the 2020 census. If you're interested in participating in that, obviously you can tell it's a short-term appointment. But that would be having, having some things between now and April to promote the census in our community and build better awareness and hopefully participation in counting of our residents. The Vermillion Housing Authority does have a board member term that is expiring this month. Terms on the housing authority board are for five years. We do ask that if you're interested, you complete an expression of interest form. And by the way, those are available online. They're fillable online. There's also forms at city hall if you want a paper copy. But for the housing authority, we'd ask that those are returned by Thursday, June 27th at noon. And then anticipate the city council would make an appointment at your next meeting on July 1st. This coming Thursday, June 20th, downtown bid or bid number two, sometimes as we refer to it, they are hosting a public meeting here in the city council chambers and that is at seven o'clock. And they'll be talking about the proposed downtown streetscape plan, looking for some public feedback, particularly with their downtown property owners with regard to what they would like to see and comments on the plan that's being developed. We do have some Plats that are approved administratively and we do have one, Lot 1, a Block 1, a French's addition to the city of Vermillion, Clay County, South Dakota. This is a lot. Basically, it's at the property is the southeast corner of the East Main Street and South Norbeck Street. The old French farm place, if you will, there, that's, did not have a lot definition to it, so it's being plotted as a lot. The South Dakota Open is this week. The community dinner is this Thursday, June 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. That is open to everybody. Don't need to be a member of the Bluffs. You don't need to be a golfer, what have you. It's an opportunity to meet the golfers. I think it's pulled pork is the menu this year. I think they, a lot of times have a putting contest and things like that, just to kind of promote the open that way. And then Jose has a map that he's going to put up here just to, we have a sewer line improvement, or not we. The property owner has a sanitary sewer project that they're going to be working on at 16 West Main Street. And it is going to necessitate the closing of Main Street for a couple of days while they work on that. So basically, you can see that Prospect Street would basically be the, let's see, keep my, you get the map upside down if we haven't taken. But that would be the, what, not the west line there, where it would be closed from Prospect and Main going to the east. That section would be closed. I can see kind of the circled area where the sewer line work is at. And then on the east side of that block, we would have that, we'd have to go in there and turn around and get back out. But that would allow some parking to still be utilized in that half-block roughly. But you would not be able to for those couple of days, starting next Tuesday, the 25th, to be able to drive completely through in that block of Main Street. You can walk through on the, particularly the north-hand side of the sidewalk. But they will be doing a sewer repair on the south-hand side, which will go from the sidewalk out into the, about the center line of the road.
Yep, just a little bit over.
So we just, we'll do some other things, put that on social media, et cetera, to help get that word out. But we wanted to share that with the council this evening.
Thank you, John. Any comments or questions for our city manager? Seeing none, we'll turn then to invoices payable. And Mike gave us a rather short list this time. Any questions for Mike?
Move to pay our bills.
Motion to second to pay our bills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have three items on consensus agenda. Item A, set a public hearing date of July 1, 2019, for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for ribs, rods, and rock and roll. Owner about September 6 and 7, 2019, on Main Street between Washington and Court Street, Rattigan Plots, Market Street from Main to Bloomingdale Street, Austin Street from Main to Kitter, Kitter Street from Austin to Court Street, Court Street from Main to half-block south, public parking lot at Market and Kitter, private parking lot at Market and Kitter, and Prospect from Main Street to National Street and to include any other streets closed for the events. And item B, I'm sorry, there's not three, there's two. Set a public hearing date of July 1, 2019, for a special permit to exceed permissible sound levels by no more than 50% for ribs, rods, and rock and roll, Inc. Owner about September 6 and 7, from 5:00 P.M. to midnight on Main Street between High and Prospect Streets.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the consensus agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, Steve.
Even though I'm very tired, I'm going to adjourn.
Motion to second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.